We'll call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as far off.
Could I please have a motion to approve the agenda?
I would motion to approve the agenda.
Michelle, are you there to provide a second?
Yep, a second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. And I think just for everybody watching tonight or maybe later, we have a quorum. Frank Ramon was present, myself, and then Michelle O'Brien by Zoom. Next up, we're going to hear from Brian Ace from the Prosser Boys and Girls Club.
I get to go earlier. Just leave early. Wow. I don't know what to say. I could comment.
We give a few quick handouts for you guys, and I'll grab a seat and we'll walk through a little bit of a power plan. Thank you for having me, everybody. I think the last time I was here was right before the signing of the lease on the building. Well, I think I maybe did an update prior or after that. But a lot of changes are happening, so it'll kind of be fun to talk through that. So I think what I'll do is maybe walk through a real quick PowerPoint, and then we'll have a lot of time for questions and feedback and comments and all that kind of fun stuff. For that, does that sound good? Or are there any big questions or dialogue before we jump through a little presentation? Okay, you're gonna be my slide advancer?
Sure, it's all set up automatically, but yes.
Okay. Sounds good. Let's go. Well, we can go back to the first slide.
Yep, I thought that was.
Nope. Quite a bit back. There we go.
Okay, we're back on the first.
Love it. Thank you. Alright, so you can advance to that second one.
One second, I just need to share that. So Kim, so all right, Zoom land can see it. There we go.
Awesome.
Okay, slide two.
Alright, so some quick updates on the Prosser branch of the club and the new construction project. Just a quick reminder for everybody on mission. We've had some changes to student reps and board members since we last talked through this, but the mission of club stays the same. All the way from when we started in partnership with the city and school district over 12 years ago now, to where we are now. And that mission's pretty simple, to empower all young people, especially those who need us most, to reach their full potential as productive, caring, responsible citizens. And that mission has guided the club since its foundation 12 years ago to where we are now, and especially through the process of doing the work to create a cabinet, raise the money, and launch the capital campaign. And in partnership with the Prosser School District, renovate the CTE building on the high school campus. We can go to the next one now. Couple of quick pieces of why did the club embark on a capital campaign? Why did we reach out to the district to partner on this facility? And it was really to solve some challenges that we saw with the model the club was operating under. So one of the first ones for that is efficiency. So when we talk about the club as it is now, we have two locations. Our elementary location next to Keene, the teen center in the old white church on the old high school campus. But that is not the most efficient operating model. Not only are the sites separate, but the programmatic spaces are quite small, so we can't serve as many kids in a single room with a single staff, and there's not as many options. So efficiency was really part of the driver to move forward with the new club build. Planning was really that second piece. So the first site, the elementary site, is a city-owned building adjacent to the pool. The long-term plan for that space is not to be a Boys and Girls Club. It's to really be part of the city amenities there at the park. And so there was an uncertain future for that building. And then obviously with the high school being built, and the high school moving off the old campus to the new one, there's an uncertain future around the white church as well. It's no longer part of that high school campus. So this allowed us to do some long-term planning by moving the club into a dedicated long-term location. So the third piece is really that quality piece. The quality that's happening in the club is wonderful. You know, Chris, Kippy, other staff are doing a great job of ensuring quality programming is taking place. But as we know, facilities matter, right? When we moved from the old high school to the new high school, we saw a difference because facilities that are designed for its purpose make a huge difference. Same thing with a club. And so we can make sure to improve the quality of services, the programs that are offered, the activities taking place in the club with the move to a new space. So quality was very much a driver to make sure that we had a single site that affirmed the dignity of the kids that we served. The fourth one is probably the most critical one, and that's the space issue. At many times throughout the club's history, since it started here in Prosser, we've had a waitlist, and that waitlist has gotten quite high. It's been a frustrating piece for families to want to get their kids into the club and to have those kids turned away because there just wasn't room. So this new facility is designed to really double the square footage and allow us to serve more young people every day. So we can go to the next slide. We did some strategy work, and then a campaign cabinet of community leaders and advocates was assembled to really do the heavy lifting of planning for the club and starting and executing on that process of raising funds for the club. And so we are appreciative of those listed on this slide that really gave time, talent, and treasure to bring this project into reality. We can go to the next one. So the budget for this project, it's a $6 million capital project. I know that seems like a lot. Construction dollars continue to increase. The goal is to bring this building to like-new condition. The goal is not to have you walk into the CTE building and say, oh, yes, this is the CTE building. You know, they patched some holes and they repaired some paint. The goal is to walk through that and really have it restored to a like-new condition. That takes the history of that building and gives it another generation of life for the community, especially because it's in such an amazing location. And so that is the total project budget for the Prosser clubhouse. Next slide, please. Location, you're all very familiar with, right down the street from here, looking at the old high school campus, the CTE building, about 20,000 square feet. We'll be doing 15,000 will be renovated to like-new condition. The rest will be a shell for future partnership with the district and others. And then the district graciously utilized the playfield and the gym to ensure that those club kids have those recreation office options during the after-school day when it's not being used by the district. So the proximity to the park, proximity to the library, all a real significant positive for this project. Next slide, please. This is kind of what the exterior of the building will look like. The goal is to have it be a beautiful building as part of that city core of park, library, club, and school, and really restore that to like-new condition. It'll still be the CTE building, same walls, same design, but it's going to look a lot different. Next slide, please. You see the layout of the building there, and those here in person have copies in front of you. There were three load-bearing walls in the building. So those stayed, right? It's too costly to take load-bearing walls and remove them, but we built the design around that in a safe and effective way. There's some really neat features of this design that I'll point out, but then I want to show you a video that gives you kind of a visual of where it is now. So I think the number one piece is a safety-related piece. So when school is happening, when you talk about elementary, middle school especially, not as much high school, but you know, when one of the challenges is transitions take place. Students move from classrooms to a library or classrooms to a gymnasium, and they do it as a group during structured times. The club is a little more free-flowing, and so transitions are a challenge. And so one of the big features of this club is there's actually a restroom in every program space, and that is a huge safety improvement for the facility and really helps us to maximize those moments with young people by having a restroom in each space. I think the other one that's worth pointing out here, and you'll see a bit of it in the video, and I'll talk over it as we show it, is as we've invested in some of our other facilities throughout Benton and Franklin counties, we know that if you have dedicated space and dedicated staff for middle school and high school youth, we can better serve middle school and high school youth. That's been a challenge up to this point for our Prosser clubhouse. We have a pretty large middle school room and high school room. We'll have dedicated staff for those program spaces, which is really going to allow us to provide more appealing and meaningful engagement with middle school and high school youth. You know, we've actually gotten to the point at our Kennewick clubhouse now where we have more middle school and high school youth there every day than we do elementary youth. And our vision is to get there with Prosser in really short order because we are going to design some real teen-affirming spaces as part of that. So I think with that, I'll save time for questions, dig further in the design. I'd love to show you a video that was taken on Friday that is a mix of drone footage, interior and exterior, so you can kind of see the condition of the building now, and I think you'll be surprised with progress. So any questions before we show that video? Oh, sorry, that's my fault. Let's show the video then. Alright. So what you'll see is brand-new roof, brand-new HVAC units. We had some leak issues in there, and those have since been resolved, obviously, with this new decking. We've got seven inches of insulation there, which is going to help the energy efficiency of that building and really protect that envelope in the in the space. Not a lot of changes to the exterior walls. That's coming. So in upcoming weeks, we'll see primer put on those exterior cinder walls, and then painting will come in the future. And so you'll see some of our interior spaces. That's our multipurpose room, activity center here, which will have basketball and and games for young people, tech lab there under the mezzanine, which is really exciting to have that full computer lab. This is our middle school space, very large space just for middle school with a shared kitchen and meeting room as we transition through those spaces into the high school room. This is actually the conference room for the teens, and then a full high school room as well. That'll be kind of that home environment as kids hang out and spend time at the club. So real, a lot of updates and changes to that interior. Once it is completed, it'll very much be a like-new building, like-new condition. And I think it's a partnership that the district can be really proud of. This space here, I'll talk through in a second. This is going to be some unfinished space in the back of the building that I'll let Superintendent Casey give some voice to on this partnership and what this structure will look like. So with that, I think we can go ahead and advance to that next slide. A lot of people could ask, well, where are we fundraising-wise, right? So a $6 million campaign is a pretty large goal. We've made some great progress. This date is a little old. We actually had commitments come in this morning for an additional 75,000. But at this point, we're right at a little over 5.1 million that's committed to this project, and we have a good plan to finish those fundraising efforts by the end of the year. So with that, I wanted to not spend too much time talking at you and instead talk with you. So if we want to advance to the next slide, I'm glad just to dialogue through and answer any questions, get any feedback as you see a district space be transformed into a new life of serving kids. So feedback, questions? How do you want to talk through this? And Superintendent Casey, if you'd like, or I can either way, but you know, if you want to talk through that community partnership space as well, we can definitely highlight that.
We can talk through together if you want.
Yeah, that sounds great. So there was a 5,000 square feet in the building that we were not.
Why don't you go back to that picture of the?
Yeah, sure. One more of the schematic. So back one more slide. There you go. Go ahead, Superintendent Casey. I'll let you kind of kick that off.
So in the light beige in the would be the bottom right-hand corner, it says Prosser Community Partnership. I think I'm, I'm sorry, but it is kind of like, oh, it says future community partnerships. So we are super excited that we are working with ESD 123, the Boys and Girls Club, and the Prosser School District. That area, we are pretty committed to it being our new ECAP program, and it will have three classrooms, which will allow us to add between 15 and 18 students in the toddler or three-year-old program. So we just finished, and Brian can kind of tell you about that since he's sitting there talking to what we put in for Elf, Early Learning Facilities Grant with the Department of Commerce. And I've read it, and so has Brian. Brian, do you remember the exact amount?
Yeah, so we will be able to get the full, well, a pretty large match out of there of 1.1 million based on the match dollars brought to the table. And so we were able to use the, some of the fundraising efforts of the club and the private donations of the club as a match for that grant through Department of Commerce.
So what does that mean to the Prosser School District? It basically means the ECAP program that has two program, two classrooms in the old high school will be able to move into this and have three classrooms. There'll be some outdoor play space. They'll be able to use much of, much if not all, I hate to use the word all, but much of the facility to expand the programs in non-Boys and Girls Club time. And the Elf grant is a federal legislation because it's a Department of Commerce grant, and it's open now, closes, and will be funded in the 25-year, correct, Brian?
Correct. So yeah, during the long session, it'll be finalized during the session from January to April in 2025.
Yep.
So excited about that partnership. It's a great mix to be able to use private donations for the club renovation as a match for state capital dollars for an early learning facility expansion.
State and federal dollars, correct?
Yes, correct, because I think the effort is also to go after congressionally-directed spending requests the next cycle as well.
And that will help support the playground equipment, the interior features. Our goal to those of you who are listening, this is a I mean, nothing is ever free, and don't get me wrong. I understand tax dollars and so forth pay for this. But this really is to the Prosser School District is a zero-out-of-pocket program, project, I guess I should say.
So glad to have conversations about that, too. Any questions, dialogue, feedback on club and ECAP expansion and really the collaboration on this great building?
When is the projected finish date?
Yeah, I love it when people ask that in public meetings. It really makes my staff listen closely as we get ready for moving. So yeah, at this point, the contractor is on or ahead of schedule under budget. We will probably have occupancy by Thanksgiving. The hope is to quickly use December, maybe some of January, to do the IT infrastructure, the equipment and furnishings to get set up to transition our kids in there early on in 2025.
And then the ECAP additions would not happen till the following fall.
So for the 25, 26 school year, are you thinking, Kim?
That's the goal. We'll know more if we get approved for the Department of Commerce and how it's actually laid out.
My favorite question to ask you, Brian, is how many more kids are you going to be able to serve with this new club? And how many are you currently serving?
Yeah, so we're currently serving a little over 100 kids every day at the club between the elementary site and the teen site. This will allow us to double that capacity served or kids served to 2 to 250 a day. And the cool part, because of that first part of our efficiencies, we'll be able to double the number of kids served with only a 25% increase in operating cost, which is a pretty exciting investment. So the community's really come behind this and continues to come behind this, to invest in this. You know, at this point, when we talk about the dollars raised, we haven't really, you know, given an opportunity for the community to give directly. It's been individual conversations with key community leaders. And so those donations of 5.1 million come from 81 individuals and businesses within the community. And so as we give opportunity for the broader community to invest in the project, we're excited to see that tick up towards goal of 6 million.
Oh, Alexander, go ahead.
Yeah, I have two questions. One is for the future ag partnership.
Yeah.
The future community partnership room. Like all the other rooms have bathrooms here.
Sure.
And if someone said they would either, it's like they're leaving from the community partnership.
Yep.
The closest would be like to go outside and go.
Sure.
And to the games room. Or to go through the partnership room and then into the learning center to use that bathroom. And I think that might be a little too out of the way.
I agree.
Putting at least one bathroom in like the community partnership room would be probably good and a good idea.
I, yep. I wholeheartedly agree with you, and you're super astute to catch that. So the reason that area is colored a little differently is because it's going to be an undeveloped shell. So this is not going to have all the walls and structure built out. And so especially that future community partnership space, which will be ECAP, the architect that the district worked with has done some preliminary designs of what that looks like. So those three classrooms will have a restroom in every classroom space, and future ag I would anticipate as well. Part of what the the club has invested is about 250,000 to bring those rooms up to code. So roof, HVAC, fire sprinkler system, and both electrical and plumbing have been routed into those spaces so that when it's time to develop and build out those spaces, it's really easy to get to plumbing, really easy to get to electrical. So I think you'll be happy, Alexander, that at the end of this, you'll see that those also have accessible restrooms. I think it's going to be an important feature.
Okay, and the second thing I have is that there seems to be that there's going to be like a second floor in the like activity area.
Yes.
Tech room.
Yes.
Is that going to be like more admin space, or is that going to be something else?
So I heard you talking before the meeting that you're looking for work. I feel like I need to hire you as a construction assistant?
I love CAD.
Okay, go team, go. So yes, there is a second floor, mezzanine level. Most people don't catch that. It was originally where the infrastructure was for the CTE building. Electrical, HVAC, all was up in that upper mezzanine. So if you remember being in there in the later days of the CTE building, we even had some dripage coming down from there because of the HVAC units, right? So once we did demo, most of that infrastructure moves right below it to a purple space between the games room and the tech lab. And so when in walking through, probably about two months ago, you know, we looked at and said, boy, can we just get rid of this thing, right? Why have a second level if we don't need that second level? Well, the response back from the structural engineer was that mezzanine actually provides support structurally for the building entirely. So if we got rid of that, the cost to reinforce the structure would be too great. So we did leave it. But because it's not ADA accessible, it won't be programmed space. It's actually built out as storage. The roof access is up there. There's hot water heater, a little bit of electrical, but a big open space above the tech lab that'll function as storage. Yep.
Yoshi, Kami, any questions? Well, thank you, Brian.
Appreciate being here. Please, at any point, those in the room or those in the community, if you've got questions, want to see the facility, want to talk through it, just reach out, you know, to Chris Sisneros, our branch director, or myself and our staff, and we're excited to connect with people about this project. We are getting close. And when we have our ribbon cutting for this in partnership with the district, you will be proud to see that asset used to benefit kids. So thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
I'm going to put you on the spot. I don't remember the date, but are the next educational event about learning?
You are putting me on the spot, yes. So each month, we are doing meetups in the park area. That's just an informal way to come across the street, have conversations over a cup of coffee or drink around what the facility and building are going to look like. I don't have those dates. I can send them out, or I'll post it on the Facebook link through the district from the meeting. I will say, it has not been announced publicly, but the next one in July, we have a wonderful ag-related partner, which will be combining with us for a beautiful and exciting giveaway. So more information to follow on that. So, alright, anything else? That's great. Thank you all. Appreciate your support. Thank you.
Item C is protocol for addressing the board. Do we have anyone signed in to speak? Anyone online? Alright, we will move on. Having no hearing of visitors, we will definitive reports. Yoshi.
Got a few things, hold on. For ASB, Mr. Gregel, the ASB advisor is looking to schedule an ASB meeting for sometime in August just to get some early stuff in the school year out of the way. For miscellaneous, the band is having weekly pep rehearsals, which are optional. And then CBC summer classes started on Monday.
Alexandra, did you have a report? Kami?
For covering athletics, Mustang Chair went to the yearly NCAA camp and earned themselves three spirit sticks and a blue ribbon for their team. I don't know much about cheer, but I know that's pretty good. Boys and girls basketball went to Seaside, Oregon for their basketball tournament. Both teams went undefeated, boys going 7-0 and girls going 4-0. And girls and boys soccer, track football, wrestling, baseball, softball have been practicing regularly. I have for you guys.
Thank you. Right. Item F, action items, vouchers. Are any questions regarding vouchers?
Number 909543, Jostens of Central Washington. What is that?
That is yearbook stuff.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions? How about a motion to approve the vouchers?
I would make a motion to approve the vouchers.
Is there a second?
Yep, a second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Action item number two, Smarsh social media quote. Sean, is that, is that you? Thank you.
I hear you guys had some questions. We're not on the last agenda, but what can I answer for you, or do you just want me to give you kind of a high-level overview of what it is?
I would like that.
Okay. So as a school district, we're required to we're held to a certain records retention schedule for all the records that we create, whether it be a paper copy or an electronic copy, whether it's our emails or it's lesson plans in the classroom or whatever it is, the state has a records retention schedule that we have to follow. Our social media is not exempt from that. So if we do any business on social media, which we do, because we post when school is two hours late, we post when school is closed, we remind everybody of activities that go on, we're required to archive that for records retention as well. We've been using, since we got social media, it was called Archive Social, and they sold to a different company. And this year, our rates went up by 12%. So back when we were with Archive Social, they were pretty much the only gig in the game, so all the schools were on it. But since then, a lot more have come to play. And since our rates went up 12%, I went looking for something else. This is a considerably cheaper option, almost half of what it is to sort to use. It's now called Civics Plus. It was Archive Social. I just want to change platforms and how we archive it.
I believe the question that came up at the last meeting was regarding the cost to upload all the information. Is this going to be the total cost for?
So there's a one-time fee. You'll see on there, that's the one-time fee. That's, we have 30 days to get all of our information off Civics Plus servers and put it on to something else. So that one-time fee is them migrating that information for us.
That's the $1,400? And then?
And then the rest of it is a yearly subscription.
The $3,900?
Yeah, okay.
Sean, I think the, I think the comment from last week, the confusion had to do with like a per, I don't know, gigabyte rate. So is that in addition to the one-time fee, or how does that play in?
No, we're well under that as it is. We only have 10 accounts. We have 10, I should say, we have 10 Facebook accounts, and I think three Twitter accounts. I think I put it in that paper that you guys have in front of you. We're well under that, but even if we weren't, that one-time fee covers all of that for us.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I would make a motion that we let's see. That we adapt an annual subscription for archiving solutions and is it with Smarsh? Yes, okay.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I second that.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Michelle. G, consent items. Is there a motion to approve the consent?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I second it.
Alright, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Reports. Deleese, Director of Business Operations.
I don't have much tonight, other than we are still working on the budget process, and we'll be ready to present the full budget for resolution next month.
Wonderful, thank you. Kim, Superintendent Kim Casey.
Hello, everybody. First of all, I have to tell you, it's a nice vacation. Lots of swimming and lots of sun, so it's great. Thank you for allowing me to zoom in. I have some amazing news to share. We had our bid opening for our tennis courts today. And And I don't know the exact number, so please don't quote me on the exact number. Um well, actually, I do have the bid number amount because it was sent to me by picture. I should have had that pulled up. Um the bid winner was a company called Game Inc. at seven hundred thousand dollars, which is approximately four hundred and fifty thousand less than what we predicted. This has a lot to do with the um tennis courts going in and mi- multiple school areas and the pros getting better at it, which is really, really good for some of our other projects. So we're super excited about that. We had a full, we had three submit bids from a range of seven hundred thousand to one point three million. This is why the bidding process is so important. In um and these all people who bid were at our pre-bid walk. And so we're super excited about all of that. Now, that's not the total cost of the project. You have some permitting and other expenses, right? But that is just a a very big deal for the Prosser School District.
How many courts?
Any questions before I move on?
How many tennis courts will that cover?
Eight.
Wow, wonderful. That's fantastic. Great work.
Um, okay, so the next thing is remember my big promise for no special board meeting or ju- uh study session in July?
I do.
When I, when things come up, I own them or not own them. I don't know that we really made a mistake. But there's an RCW in the state of Washington that to be able to go through forward with um an LGO, better known as a, it's a um a loan, right, to on our levy dollars, you've been hearing me talk about that. Well, it says that in this RCW, it doesn't just say posted in the newspaper for two weeks. It says posted in the newspaper for two weeks and the last one has to be seven days before your meeting where you approve the resolution. So we're going to post it in the paper on the third and the tenth. And we'll have to have a special meeting on the seventeenth. It will be short, but we will need to approve the resolution on the seventeenth at a special meeting. So we can do zoom in, but if you need to put those on your calendar. Brian and and Jason, we will be sending out an email with all of the information. Um Selena's going to publicize that, but it will have to be done on the seventeenth. We will not have a study session. It will be a one-item-only agenda. But ladies and gentlemen, that's also really good news because the actual interest rate of the loan came less than five percent. We had six bidders on our amazing credit rating and so forth. What's this going to allow us to do? It's going to allow us to do these projects. That includes the accessibility at Art Fiker Stadium, that's the roof at Housel, that's the tennis court I just told you about. That's all of these things and getting them done in a timely and exciting fashion for our community. And um then pay them back with our levy dollars. Um obviously, we have to pay interest on it. No one likes to have to pay interest. But we have a promise to our community and we're going to be able to fulfill that because of this um loan opportunity we were given. So stay tuned for that. I'm welcome for any questions now, but I will answer them as we go forward.
Any questions?
Have we found an appraiser yet for the property?
No, actually, it's, I'm so glad you brought that up, um Mr. Volmon. The reason I say that is um I did some research. Well, that's not true. I'm going to tell you how it happened and you can laugh at me if you want. You know, we moved, right? That like move, every time you move is like having a good fire or something. Well, I was cleaning out files and I found the last time all the properties were appraised. And Selena's sitting there, Selena, did we look at it, was it eighteen? Or sixteen?
I want to say it was eighteen.
I'm sorry, what did she say?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Okay, so we found them and it has an appraiser's name on it. So we're going to reach out to them to see if they'd be willing to apply to our RFQ. So we did find that. Um it's super exciting. Um we are I guess that Sean, if Sean is still sitting there, it's really exciting um to say we're moved in. Um the air conditioning's getting installed, the exterior paint's going to be done. We are going to have to close down tomorrow in in the respect that we have to switch over the network. Sean, if you're still there, can you explain?
I am. And yes, I'm happy to explain. I'll get closer so you guys can hear me. So uh we are going to physically take our network from where we were and move it to the other building. It'll just be a little bit more seamless since all of our computers are already connected, our copiers are connected to that network. Uh but we're physically having to move it, so we'll disconnect the fiber at old PHS and move all our servers in and then reconnect it all back up. I'm hoping that we're only down for four hours, but I've told everybody that just a plan for all day tomorrow, just in case we run into some hiccups.
We have put that out to social media, we put it out to the staff. Um the only thing we have to kind of work through is um the postal service, FedEx and UPS. Um but other than that, we should be really ready to go, I mean, you know, up on Friday, we should all be, everything should be pretty good. Um we're super excited about that work. Um anything else, Sean, you want to talk about our move over?
No, it's looking really great. We're excited for you guys to see it.
Remember, you can't come to the house until we get all the boxes put away though, so. No, we'd be happy to show you at any time. I'm teasing, but it still does look like when you move into a new house.
Any questions for Kim? Further questions?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Kim, sorry, this is Michelle. Um when do you anticipate our board meetings being held at the old Prosser High School?
We're, our goal is to do an August ten op- uh that's our first meeting in August. Um that's the goal. Um paint and carpet and board table and stuff is um slated for the late, mid to late July. And then we have to finish our technology piece and our s- sound system and our screens and right? So we're shooting for the tenth, but I'm pretty committed to the twenty-fourth of August. We're shooting for the tenth.
Excellent, thank you.
Uh huh.
I'm looking forward to visiting when you get your boxes all unpacked.
Yeah, no, um for those of you who are doing one-on-ones next week, I will have you in my office next week.
Okay, good to know.
Well, thank you, thank you, Kim. And let's see, board member reports. Michelle, do you want to go first?
Yeah, I can do that. Um I don't have anything to report, so very quick for me.
Very good.
I do not have anything either.
Well, I won't wreck the trend. I have no rapport either. Our next meeting will be July tenth in the Prosser High School Library Workroom. The space, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.